Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Hingham School Committee meeting of March 25th, 2019. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised by Harbor Media. And if anyone else intends to audio or video record the meeting, just please let me know. Seeing none? All right. We'll move on to item number two. Excuse me. Approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee budget work session three held on January 17th, 2019.
Carrie, thank you. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm just going to make a note, because it came to my attention, that Jamie was left off of the attendance list on those minutes.
Oh, okay.
So I will change that with that of it. Is that okay?
Are you ready good with that? All right, great. Two point two.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee with the Board of Selectment and Advisory Committee held on February 5th, 2019.
Carrie, second. Thank you. Discussion?
I just want to note that I did get up to the mic and made a comment urging the Board of Selectment to work as hard as they could to ensure that we push Foster as a high priority. And it actually illustrated that by not pushing the warrant article, we would have to wait perhaps over four months. And I think we can just review the tape and get the right language there of exactly what I said. So if there is a way to reflect that, I would appreciate it.
Do you want to put that in these minutes? Or do you want to add this to this week's minutes that Carlos noted? I was thinking you could go either way.
Oh, yeah. Well.
It should go in these minutes.
Yeah, in these. I'm fine to put it in these minutes. But I don't think it's necessary for me to go word for word of what was stated. I can just say that, make a note that you commented that Foster School is a priority at the town and at the school committee.
Okay.
Is that all right? Okay. Thanks.
Is that good, Carlos?
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Any other changes or comments? All right. So with the inclusion of Carlos's comments, all in favor of these minutes?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Thank you. This item number three is questions and comments from the audience. We encourage community engagement and welcome question and comments as agenda items are discussed. In addition, we do have time set aside at the beginning of the meeting if anyone wishes to speak about something not on the agenda. All right. Then we will move on to item four, superintendent's report.
The spring coaching assignments are in your packet. In addition, we have some good news. First of all, last Friday was the annual Credit for Life Fair that we've been running at the high school. Special thanks to Kathy Savery from the Guidance Office and Joe Tarantello from the Business Department who've honchoed this the last couple of years and another successful real-world experience for our seniors. Also, last week, what day was it that our students visited the State House?
I think it was Thursday. I think. I think it was Thursday.
The kindness, first grade kindness club at Foster School and the Hingham High School kindness club visited the State House as guests of Senator O'Connor last week and had the pleasure of leading off the Pledge of Allegiance, which was a fun activity. So thank you to Senator O'Connor for making that a possibility. Also, just this afternoon, received information that a student from last year's junior class, current senior, Will Sutton, was one of only 16 students in the country, in the country, to earn a perfect score on last spring's AP US History exam, which was really pretty special. And to quote our principal, Rick Swanson, who taught that course for something like 15 years when he was an assistant principal, he's not sure as the instructor that he could have earned a perfect score on that exam, but that's pretty special. 16 in the country, AP US History, which of course is a course our students take as juniors. So that information just came along. So congratulations and good wishes.
Thank you. And thank you to the AP US History teacher.
Yes.
Whoever that was.
I know. Nicely done. Is that it, Doc?
Yes.
All right. I don't see Emma here for student communications, so assuming there's none. Other communications, everyone, I hope, saw my email from Melissa Smith and Mary Eastwood about the recognition of the Plymouth River School and the South School at the State House. So if you can attend, let them know. That's nice of them to include us on the invitation, and I'm sure that will be a great ceremony. I think that's all I have for other communications. So item six, unfinished business, to hear an update on the administration's proposed operating budget for fiscal year '20.
So, and it's just a simple slide. We're still at the, we haven't had any changes since the last budget. So we're currently, the preliminary budget list reductions that we had is at $54,692, $638. But we have to get down to a target where all three boards voted, a $54,319,826 budget. So we're still shy $372,812. Since March 11th, there hasn't really been any other reductions. Last week, I did receive four new applications to the VOTEC school, however. So they were all the South Shore Vocational Technical School. The director over there had sent those applications over, so they have to be in by April 1st. We don't have any insight as to whether there'll be an acceptance or not. So anyways, they're sitting right now on a tracking list with, I really don't know what the status will be ultimately. Talking about, there's probably will be some savings on the special ed van leases.
Excuse me, John. I just want to make sure.
Sure.
Not all the school committee members have this sheet.
I thought I put one in front of everybody.
No, I know. It's double sided.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just so that we can follow. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
I just gave them mine. They must have packed them into the. Oh. All right. I think you packed them up with your other notes. Does anybody need more?
Sorry, thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that. So I think there'll be some small savings on the special ed van leases due to the five-year lease from some preliminary pricing that I've been getting in. But, you know, that's not going to be making the budget, right? It might save us $10,000 or so. And then there should still be some savings on energy prices, but there's no contracts locked in right now. And, you know, when I took a peek at kindergarten enrollment today, we've got packets distributed of 261 in total, and right now, there's 195 returned. So that will continue on for another week or so. I think, and then we'll get a better idea of what the actual kindergarten enrollment will be. But other than that, unfortunately, I have no other additional news on the budget at this time. There is still time, and I'm sure that some things will, some things will change. And, you know, it's just a matter of getting to that point. But, you know, we'll, so.
Okay. Could you, do you mind reminding folks of sort of timing? Because we are, we do have a gap right now of 373,000, just about. So what is the timing? When do we really need to start? So we've approved the overall dollar amount, but we, line items, we may need to start chipping away at.
Right.
So what's our timeframe on that?
I think, I mean, the, I think the timeframe really would be, you know, sometime in May.
Okay.
I mean, I think we can get by the voted town meeting. We've decided that we'll live with that budget. And, you know, there'll be, there'll be things that will be, new initiatives that will reduce from that level to get to the goal, you know. But, you know, prior to that time, any savings that we can get, or any new additions, or, you know, resignations, or leaves of absence, or any new cost-saving items that we've become aware of, we'd certainly want to take advantage of those before we decide what we need to take off. Because when we put those initiatives on, we do think that they're all very critical, and they're all very important to the overall, you know, school operations and programs. So the longer we can wait, but I would say, you know, we have until after town meeting and, you know, the beginning of May, where we should really, you know, start making the harder decisions. At that time, we'll have a better feel for where the kindergarten enrollment is, and we'll know, you know, what we'll need for sections there. So that could, that could help alleviate some of the burden. And, you know, we may learn of some new, you know, new personnel movement between now and that time as well. So I would suggest we wait.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thinking about what our priorities are and whatnot.
And it's just in the packet, so you know, I mean, it's in the packet, but there's a, the presentation's at the very end. It has this one new sheet in it, but has all the other information.
Okay.
Just FYI.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Just a, any questions or comments? I know there's a couple people in the audience who have some comments. So if we don't, if nobody on the committee does, Josh, you want to go? Come on up.
What's the potential impact on the budget of all four of those vocational students get accepted and go on for next year? Like, how much is tuition a year?
Yeah, they're about $18,000.
Each?
Each.
Okay.
36,072,000.
Right.
Maximum. Typically, that wouldn't happen, though, but, and one of them actually, one of the applications is actually somebody that was on the list before, which is, they're in two places. They have an application in for North Fort Aggie as well as VOTEC.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, it's a big number.
So, John, we already have four.
That we knew of. So this will be eight? Well, no, it'll be seven if they're.
Yeah. There was, is one who had applied to a different vocational school. So we've got him in the count.
Right.
It's just not clear where he'll go. And one of them is a young person that we just voted to be a homeschooling student for the remainder of this year, anyway. And it's new to town, so was not here in the fall when we asked people to let us know.
So are you talking about actually enrolled people?
So, for the plan for next year's budget?
Right.
If they all get accepted and go, it would be?
I think it's 10. If all four of these got accepted, I think it would be a 10.
Oh.
Because I think I have six in there.
Oh, okay. I thought it was four. Okay. But, that's fine. Okay. Well, no, then it would be nine, because you said one person is.
Right. Well, I have other, I had other people on the list as well, so, yeah. No, right.
Nine or 10.
These four. Right. Yeah. There's.
That's the most.
Right. And, you know, you're right. One of them, we added already to the tracking mechanism.
Right.
Because I think, was there a VOTEC add in here?
Yeah.
There's a VOTEC add in here, so, you know, that's correct. That was, that one, I'm counting as the sixth right now.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Tim? Come on up.
Hi. Tim Dempsey. I'm the Chair of CPAC. CPAC wrote a letter to the school committee. I won't read the whole letter, but I wanted to read parts of it.
And everyone has a copy?
Everyone has a copy of it, if you don't, let me know. And for, I will be posting the letter on the Facebook page afterwards if anyone wants to read the entire letter. But, "Dear Hingham School Committee Members, we are writing in support of the proposed initiatives for special education in the 2019-20 budget. The language-based academic home base, the lab pilot, the two inclusion facilitators at the middle and high schools, the early childhood home behavior specialists, and an additional 1.5 special education teachers for elementary schools. These initiatives will benefit all special needs children in Hingham from early childhood all the way through high school and represent long-held needs that Hingham parents have spent years advocating for." I then go into each of the programs and why they're needed. But, "We strongly encourage the school committee to push for the proposed budget which fully funds these four initiatives. They do not represent extra services, but rather fill in current deficits. A school budget that includes these initiatives would allow Hingham schools to serve its special education population in a way that is fair, equitable, coordinated, thoughtful, and results-oriented. Suzanne Venice, the Director of Student Services, presented these initiatives to CPAC in February, and I cannot begin to describe the level of excitement and enthusiasm in the room. I truly believe that this is an important moment for CPAC School Committee and the Hingham Administration where we can come out of a relationship that has been historically marred with distrust and antagonism from all sides to a positive working relationship which is focused on one thing, building the brightest future for all of Hingham's exceptional children." So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's signed from the board, which is Tim Dempsey, the Chair, Jennifer Doan, Public Relations, Jennifer Van Gelder Gallagher, Secretary, and Janice Sullivan, Treasurer.
Great.
For the signees.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Good timing, John. All right. Any other comments on the budget? All right. All right. So then we will move on to new business. Seven point one, to hear the Industrial Technology Program Review.
Are you guys protecting? Yeah. Look at the lights. Oh. Usually that lighting.
Oh, you weren't ready for the lighting.
And those other ones, Josh? Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for having us tonight. Happy to be here.
Thank you.
Myself and Ryan Assosier prepared the program review for tonight. What I'd like to do, please, is start by reading our statement of philosophy, and then go on to go over some numbers and things like that. "The Industrial Technology Program meets the diverse needs of the students by developing a better understanding and a hands-on perspective of an ever-changing technological society. The aim of the Industrial Technology Department is to develop an appreciation and knowledge of a variety of tools, materials, and processes, as well as the development of problem-solving, critical thinking, and independent learning skills for a lifelong learner." That's right. What I'd like to do now, please, is to introduce our staff. We have Doug Baker here. He's with the middle school. Bob Kenny could not be here tonight. Ryan Assosier is teacher at the high school. Rory Mulherby at the high school, as well as myself. Okay. I'd just like to talk about our members over the past four years. Okay? The members at the high school have remained high due to continuous interest and popularity of our classes, so they've been pretty consistent over the years. At the middle school this year, they've gone up exponentially, and that is because of the addition of a new sixth grade class called the Introduction to Industrial Arts. And approximately 94% of all sixth graders are taking that class. So that's, that's been pretty new. So that's, our members have jumped quite a bit, which is great. Thanks, Ryan. We have a wide range of courses that we offer, anywhere from construction technology to graphic design and photography, to technical drawing, technical education, consumer automotive, power technology, robotics, and woodworking. I want to say at this point that, over the past four years, something that's really helped our department is we've gotten grants from the PTO, as well as, in the last go-round of the Hingham Educational Foundation, we were awarded $36,000 in grants, and that really helped us quite a bit. I'm going to talk a little more, but one of the things that really helped us with, we're able to start a new class this year for the first time called Robotics and Engineering. So here was one of our, the robots, we were able to use part of the grant to purchase the materials we needed for that class. And it's helped us in woodworking and in graphic arts with our other expenditures. But that money has been a big help to us, and it's really helped us to greatly enhance our program. So that's a great help. Okay. What we'd like to do, we'd like to challenge our students in technology education. We do this by developing problem-solving skills. We provide design activities that stimulate critical thinking. And I just wanted to go over an example of one of those right now. One of the units that we teach in woodworking and at the Tracers Program is called the CO2 Egg Car Design Challenge. This right here is a CO2 egg car. What we do is this, in this unit, is we take the students and we put them in groups. And in the groups, we have them, they will brainstorm a design. We give them the criteria and the materials list of what they're able to use. So then what they do as a group is they will design the car, and it has to carry an egg, that's the passenger. And then what we do is we have them build it. They build it. We race the cars, and then we test the results. And then what we do is we bring it in to the classroom, we do an analysis of what we accomplished, what they accomplished, and then we redesign them. So this is all a big part of the engineering design process, which we have incorporated through our middle school projects into our high school. So this has probably been pretty big over the last, last number of years. So what we try and do with our curriculum is engage in teamwork. We obtain, through this, we obtain hands-on and real-world experiences. We explore career opportunities. We embrace lifelong learning skills. And the last one, this we think is, over the past number of years, we've noticed that this has really helped the students to build self-esteem in themselves and confidence. And I think as, later on, we're going to show you some of the projects that they have made. And I think, again, this really helps the students as they advance, whether it be in graphic arts, technical drawing, woodworking, automotives, or robotics, really helps as they advance, just it really helps them build confidence. And like I said, so this was one of the cars that was designed, and they did pretty good. Pretty, it's interesting to see them do it. And it's really, really fun when they race, race they. So these are powered by CO2 in the back. And what we have, we have a starting gate, and they run along a fishing line, and we run about 30 feet long, and we race them together. And what we do is, we determine the fastest car where the egg passenger doesn't break is the winner. And we have a prize. Okay?
This is a Pinewood Derby 2.0.
Sure is. Yeah. Yes, it is. Great. So at the middle school, woodworking technology and technology education classes are both very popular. Many students who take these electives at the middle school will go on to take further electives at more advanced at the high school. Wood technology projects, which we have several here, can range from a cutting board to a carved box. We build rockets as well, and we do silk screening. I'd already mentioned, but there is now an Introduction to Industrial Arts course for the sixth graders, which is doing very well. We think that's going to also help. It's part of the STEM program, but that's going to help us further, you know, enhance our program. We are implementing lessons that include, as I talked about, the engineering design process. We are starting that at the middle school even as low as the grade six. So we think that we'll, we'll be producing more and more engineering skills. Okay? Thank you. At the high school, all of our high school industrial technology electives have been popular and have been running, a high number of requests and enrollment. Again, at the high school, classes range from project-based classes to a technology engineering focus. The Tracers Program continues to have strong enrollment. Graphic design and photography students have some of the most visible artwork in school and in town. And the industrial technology has the most active high school website, and that's due to Ryan Assosier, Galli Interstate, updating nearly every day with new content. And as I had mentioned before, this is the first semester, right now, at the high school that we've offered a robotics class, and that's being taught by Rory. So we have some, we're really looking to build on these things. That's what we've been able to accomplish the past number of years. And before I turn it over to Rory, what I did want to talk about, funding as well. We've gotten the grants, which has been fantastic. But over the years, the support from Dart Gallow has gotten us the money. A number of towns have not been able to continue the program, and we feel it's been really great and helpful to, more of a comprehensive school, we've seen a lot of kids go on to do some great things, you know. So what I'd like to do is have Rory talk about the awards and accomplishments, and then we want to show you some of the work and open up for questions. Okay? Rory?
Ryan.
Ryan?
This is so small. So, although this year isn't really something we're talking about, I do, I did include this last time, and I will listen to. Industrial Technology students won 32 of the school's 44 awards this year in the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, which is a statewide competition. That the students at Hingham High School have done very well in the past 13 years I've been here, but the last four years that we're covering today, very, very well. In 2015, 25 pieces were honored as winners in the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. That's 25 of the 30 that the school got, including a national gold medal for one student. In 2016, the Industrial Technology students won 24 of the school's 29 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Three of those went on to be recognized nationally, winning gold medals. Less than 1% of students whose work wins at the state level goes on to win a medal nationally. So it's very, it's very prestigious. You know, one of the reasons that I became an art teacher was because I loved my art teacher in high school, and I reconnected with her over Facebook and really wanted her to know what I was doing. She said that her students won one of these things her whole career. So it's a, it's a big accomplishment for these Hingham students. In 2017, Industrial Technology students won 88 of the school's 100, which was a very big year for the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Eight of the Gold Key pieces at the state level went on to be recognized with national medals. And then in 2018, Industrial Technology students won 55 of the school's 69 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. One of those went on to be recognized with a national medal. In four years, Industrial Technology students have been recognized 192 times by the state for their outstanding work. And in, in the last four years, Industrial Technology students have been recognized 12 times nationally for their work with medals. For three of the last four years, Hingham School swept the high school age range categories at the South Shore Arts Center, Young Artist Show, the South Shore Arts Festival. All the award winners for us can be seen at this website here that, that is, you can get to through the departmental websites for Industrial Technology on the Hingham Schools page. And you can click on art shows. I section everything out by the art shows and the projects. Graphic design and photography has increased our visibility by working with the art department to participate in more art shows, and their current list of art shows is there. There's a statewide show going on now that's going to be going down, I think coming down this week, in Boston, where all the Gold Key work is on display. We have the Hingham Public Schools Art Showcase, the Young Artist Show at the Second Parish Church, which we've been participating in for years. The Public Library Show is up earlier this year, the South Shore Arts Center Young Artist Show at the South Shore Arts Festival, and, of course, the ongoing student display at Starbucks this year, too. There's always a featured student there, which I, I think since we started doing that, it's been one of my students every time. So these students are really, really doing well with this, and I feel personally making me look very good. They've been doing a very, very good job, and I'm proud of their work.
That's wonderful.
Great. What we'd like to do is, the person would also like to share, maybe pass around some of the stuff to see. You should go with that.
Very effective calls. And really a great program. I know both my children liked, enjoyed the industrial arts. Any questions, comments?
I just want to be careful.
Go ahead, Carlos.
I want to add what you just said. My two sons went through the program, and I still have the ads around, especially the checkers and a couple other items. I can see the box. I have that, too. I say I have it because I've been using it.
These first two pieces in the castle, these are both that were made in traces by 11th grade girls. One just made this, and one just made that.
Wow. So pretty.
We got to keep them?
Yeah.
I'm going to ask them.
No, I don't. I'm going to ask them. 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 I'm going to ask them.
These first two pieces in the castle, these are both, they were made in traces by 11th grade girls. One just made this, and one just made that.
How do you have them?
Wow. So pretty.
Do we got to keep them?
Yeah.
Wow.
Seriously.
Isn't this beautiful? It's amazing. Wow.
This right here, just to give you an example.
Well, I have, we have this one.
I have one of those, yes.
That's the middle, that's the middle school, and this is the high school.
Oh, wow.
So I have that one, that one, and that one. I have all three pieces. And plus, there was another one, I think is the timekeeper.
Yeah, we have this, too.
Yeah.
The box.
Wow, this is beautiful. Just amazing.
I think Emmett made the box.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great job.
They're solid. I have, actually, I have a cutting board, and I have a gumball machine. So, but the quality's amazing.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Awesome.
I mean, just the thickness of the wood, too.
We have one of the cranberry things in our.
Can I send my cutting board to be refinished? I've been, I've been, I've been using so much.
I love this one.
My wife said, "Don't use that." That's.
This makes it.
That is beautiful.
No, that's actually the.
Great work. Good job.
It's cold, liquid?
It does, yes.
All right. We're going in all different directions.
I know.
Well, let's, let's make sure this passed the test. Hold on. Great. This would be a nice item to raise some funds.
That's warm-up maple.
It's beautiful.
Yeah.
I've had the pleasure of second-year class. Yeah.
It's just beautiful.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
It's beautiful. I actually think this must encourage kids to look into variation schools, and they enjoy that, which is nice, because I, I'd like to see more kids go into variation schools. Yes.
It's interesting, the way you've done so well, encouraging the kids. And I'm thinking to myself, congratulations.
I mean, this is just beautiful work.
Well, it's, in my time, it's exponential. I mean, number one or two, Hallway made it. Now we have John Sade in nine or 10.
No, what? So what are those? What are those?
The kids designed the covers.
Just produced by the kids?
Yeah, so they made, and then they made, they made, they fully made, like.
It's very, thank you for sharing.
Paul, the table that you made for John is outstanding. Who made that table?
You do?
How about the video? No, no, okay, okay.
It's all thick, yeah.
It's pretty nice, though.
Yeah.
They look pretty authentic.
They sure do. I mean, I want to see this.
I know.
Yeah, I know, right? Somebody's got to make that move. What is CNC? Is that laser?
It's not laser. It's computer.
A program.
Yeah, but that's, that's usually we hand out, Paul. We give them, I give them.
That's very nice, okay. And are they real names?
No, I think, to see how they solve that problem.
So this is 3D. This is, this is an applicant.
So it's all one piece of wood, right? It wasn't, it wasn't put down.
Nope. A ship.
Every year I ask the kids to.
It's not wrong, it's all.
I feel like.
Good job, huh?
Awesome job. Thank you. Do you ever do field trips to?
They're really cool.
What a cool assignment. Gas, heat, and half.
Who makes all the?
That's me.
Gaslighting.
I think the heart of Rabb.
Oh, that's another, that's another teacher.
Eliza, you've been here so long. Maybe you'll help solve my problem.
I'm going back to Cal. Oh, my God. That's what we really do. Usually our real ships are awesome. You say so, right?
Oh, I didn't see those.
Wow, there's a whole bunch of these.
Oh, yeah. I always pull too many things. That's from this year. That's a, that's a painting on an iPad. She painted that with a stylus on an iPad.
Oh, my God.
Is it, is it all the same as mine?
I think so. It says.
Ask them to enter the email, press a word, and it's going to work.
Yes, it's not authorized to a lot of people, yeah. I know, it's Karen Mondo.
Karen?
Is it trained by that photo? What's the history of it?
That is, I mean, it's all, it's all fake. I mean, but that's, the story took, her name's Alila, and that's her sister.
It's cute.
I purposely put it right here in the areas of concern.
My daughter, class of 2015, she took Technical Drawing. She, she won an award, but she got her Liberal Arts degree. She's going to graduate from college this spring. And she still remembered that class, and it gave her a passion for, an interest in architecture design. She's going into the training program for project management for a large construction company in Boston, and she still thought back to that Technical Drawing class. So I firmly believe in the programs that we offer the kids in Hingham, because it can serve a passion, it can experiment with something new, different for them. But even when they go on to, you know, be, get regular degree in college, they can go back to that skill and follow that passion and pursue a career in something that's a little untraditional. But she's very excited about her opportunity, and she, every time she talks to people about it, she talks about she had an opportunity to begin exploring it in high school. So I thank you very much for making those opportunities available to kids. And I wanted you to know that, that when you least expect it, something will come back that they remember from a class like that. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing. And we, that's kind of where we want to build some self-esteem confidence, too. And what's interesting, now, we have four girls at Tracers, which, and again, two of them were juniors that made the bowls there. So we're seeing it develop in a lot of different areas, but gaining confidence and.
Let me, let me, if I may, piggyback on Liza's statement. My younger daughter, class of 1993, went through the middle school program at the high school, bonded with the teachers, and it's the career that she is in right now. Out of her, me, mother, and father encouraged her to get a Liberal Arts Bachelor's Degree. So once she finished that, she got herself a job with Polo and was in charge of their outlet displays. And it's gone on and on, and it's, it's, it's her life right now. And so thank you all and your predecessors. And just remember, it's just, it, it really impacted, impacted her life, absolutely.
And I have a story, too. So I subbed in one of the middle school classes, and we watched a movie about the making of a drill. And I forget the name of the company, but I ran home, and I had inherited one from my Uncle Guth. And so I have one in the basement, and I was, I had no, knew, I didn't know anything about it until I saw that movie. And it's, I've had the pleasure of subbing in all of your classes, and I always learned something myself. And, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for sharing. Thanks for having us today.
Can't beat show and tell.
Thank you.
Can't beat show and tell.
Thanks very much. Yeah, we need more of that, just more show and tell. More show and tell. It's nice.
It is nice, no, it is.
Has it been four years? I did.
Has it been four years since we did? Wow.
It does.
But you brought more stuff this time.
Yeah. You didn't probably bring half of the stuff. Oh, that is great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so then, just going to move on to 7.2, to discuss the foundation budget resolution. And actually, I had just put this on here because a few of us had gone to a meeting at the library the other night that the Hingham Teachers Association had organized with the hall reps as well, with Senator O'Connor and Representative Joan Moschino and some other folks from the State House to just discuss the various options coming up on this, at the State House, relative to foundation budget funding. And so we had talked about, and I think everyone saw the email from MASC that we received with updates, did you see that, on sort of where their heads are at around the foundation budget? And I think they haven't, they haven't, they're not supporting one particular option right now. There are several options on the table, but I wanted to just bring it up. I don't necessarily think we are ready to draft a resolution now, but just something to keep on our radar, that we may want to do that in the next few weeks or so. And then there are also some dates that were given at that meeting, and I apologize, I meant to bring them tonight, but I don't have them. But I'll send them to everyone, just sort of some hearings that are coming up and some other opportunities in addition to the Day on the Hill on May 1st, for folks to go and advocate for public education spending. May 16th is.
One of them, it's, it's, that's the finger rally.
June, I'm sorry. Would you mind, just so people at home can know, and maybe people who want to help support public funding of our public.
Education Association. So the hearings for the Promise and Cherish Act were last Thursday. Thursday was the Cherish Act. The Promise Act was last Friday. Educators were on the Hill to testify. They were, had to wait for the, almost the entire hearing to be heard. We had four Patriots players who came and testified on our behalf. And when I say "our," I do mean every single community member, not just the MTA or teachers. And then we have, May 16th, we have a big rally, and the MTA is willing to provide buses for people, so no one has to drive and find parking and can, so we can get as many buses as we get. It's 30 people per bus.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, great. So that's just really more of an FYI. And then, as another FYI, item 7.3 is the Foster School Frequently Asked Questions document that's in the package. So once again, thank you to the Community Outreach, Carrie Libby and Kay for putting these together. These are up on the website now, our Hingham Public Schools website.
Under School Committee.
Under School Committee?
Was, can I ask?
And these are, we can make, we can add things to it, we can update things, sort of after-town meeting, we'll update on, you know, the town meeting results.
Right. And we don't know the warrant number, so there will be possible edits coming to the document, and it is a living document, so as the school committee progresses with more information, et cetera, et cetera, it can be updated. So please, you know, public check back, make sure you have the current copy if you do decide to read it. But it is up there for everyone.
Okay.
Can I? Don't. So I thought it was great. I don't have anything, there's just the second question. It should either read, "What action is the school committee taking?" Or "What actions are the school committee taking?"
Right, yeah.
Okay. So that was the only thing I found.
Okay.
That I had a comment on.
So is that a PDF? It's the one in the packets, PDF, so I can just trade it in the document and.
Will it change automatically online, or do I need to?
I'm not sure.
Resend it?
Yeah.
So, and I know that Beth is also going to have.
Dr. Wilcox, yeah. Because that would make sense for the principal to know. So she's looking at it and is going to offer some feedback and suggestions.
And then, one more note to it, I haven't posted it publicly, that it's online, because I wanted it to be announced at tonight's meeting.
Yes.
Just in case there's questions, all the school committee members know that it's out there and it's up on the website. I didn't want, on Friday, someone to get a call and not know. So I'm happy to also post it to Facebook after that edit, or maybe even after, you know, Beth has a look at it.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can go more public with it, but it is currently online for me.
Yes. All right, great. Yeah, so I'm, yeah, so the purpose was to make it a living document, so that it can be updated from time to time and get input from the administration, from Dr. Wilcox, from updates that we get at town meeting. Dr. Gallo, when do we, when would we normally know what our warrant article is going to be, what number, letter it's going to be?
I think that there's decisions will be made last week.
Okay.
So I would think that we would.
No.
No.
Maybe, okay.
Because they have to be in the warrant, and the warrant is going to depress.
Right. Okay. All right. Okay, that's true.
Maybe George knows.
Do you know George, by any chance?
No, they were due in the end of last week.
Okay.
Do you know when they're.
The final ones need submitted there in last, end of last week.
Do you know when they're going to release it? I know we usually get it at home, like, two weeks before town meeting, but.
I do know that.
Okay. Awesome. All right, well, thank you. All right. Item 7.4 is to receive notification of the overnight field trip of the Hingham High School Quiz Bowl team to Virginia and Washington, DC, on April 26 through April 28. Does anyone, everybody has it in their packet? Any questions or comments on that? All right, sounds good.
Sorry. I just, the warrant message.
Oh.
Probably that communications thing you're trying to think of.
Yes, that was what I was trying to think of. And I was just thinking, is it in the packet?
Yeah, it's at the end of.
Okay. Oh, yes. Sorry, my packet is a little bit backwards. I think this is under the 48 hours.
Yeah.
So we're on to item number eight of Items Not Reasonably Known 48 Hours in advance of the meeting. In your packet is the report of the school committee that will be in the warrant, in the warrant article. And that was a little bit of a, it was just in the last couple of days that we finalized that, because we didn't realize quite how quickly it was going to press. So, John, thank you for drafting it. And then Liza and I had looked through it and update, made some changes to it, but that is the message as it will appear. Does anybody else have any other 48-hour items? No? All right. Subcommittee and project reports. Let's start with, Carlos, do you want to do long-range planning?
Sure. So long-range planning met this evening to go over the capital budget. You're all aware that we started our budget with asking for over 2.5. We reduced to 1.8. We went before the capital, and they actually offered us 975, 975. Let me give Kay the right number. 975, 751 is the final number that they ended up signing off on.
Can I repeat the story? Sorry.
975, 751. So with that, we had to meet and go over eliminating line items that we thought would have to wait. So I am pleased to announce that we are close to a balance, you know, to reach the number. You know, there's a little more work to do, but we are, we are pretty close to our numbers. You know, we are very fortunate that two large numbers, the 350 for the extraordinary maintenance, and also the 550 for the windows at the high school were removed from this capital budget. All together, once it's approved by town meeting, we will sort of like, we'll look at, we, we got an additional $1.5 million. John, anything to add to that?
That's, that was correct. The, yeah, between those two articles, you know, those, another $800,000, so capital, capital funding this year is up like to about 1.8 million, right? 75,000.
Yes.
So, you know, very, very good. And, you know, we look at it a little bit differently, because we consider the FE, the Foster Extraordinary Maintenance Capital in an article, and the Clear Story Windows in an article. But some of that extraordinary maintenance would have been in our capital budget.
In your packet is the report of the school committee that will be in the warrant, in the warrant article, and that was a little bit of a, it was just in the last couple of days that we finalized that, because we didn't realize quite how quickly it was going to press. So, John, thank you for drafting it, and then Liza and I had looked through it and updated, made some changes to it, but that is the message as it will appear. Does anybody else have any other 48-hour items? No? All right. Subcommittee and project reports. Let's start with Carlos, do you want to do long-range planning?
Sure. So, long-range planning.
Met this evening to go over the capital budget. You all aware that we started our budget with asking for, over 2.5. We reduced to 1.8. We went before the capital, and they actually offered us 975, 975. Let me give Kay the right number. 975, 751 is the final number that they ended up signing off on.
Can I repeat that, sorry?
975, 751. So with that, we had to meet and go over eliminating line items that we thought would have to wait. So, I am pleased to announce that we are close to a balance, you know, to reach the number. You know, there's a little more work to do, but we are, we are pretty close to our numbers. You know, we are very fortunate that two large numbers, the 350 for the extraordinary maintenance, and also the 550 for the windows at the high school were removed from this capital budget. All together, once it's approved by town meeting, we'll sort of like, we'll look at that we got an additional 1.5 million dollars. John, anything to add to that?
No, that's, that was correct. The, yeah, between those two articles, you know, those, another $800,000, so capital, capital funding this year is up like to about 1.8 million, right? 75,000.
Yes.
So, you know, very, very good. And, you know, we look at it a little bit differently, because we consider the FE, the Foster Extraordinary Maintenance Capital in an article, and the Clear Story Windows in an article. But some of that extraordinary maintenance would have been in our capital budget, so, you know, dollar for dollar, when we look at it in comparison to last year, we did get an increase in capital.
And additionally, we are hoping that, you know, John and his staff are on the process of applying for a grant, that the governor made some money available for safety and security, so hopefully we get some money that will help reinstate some of the items that we actually eliminated today. But I also wanted to bring up one more time, that we are constantly, you know, the grant is something we identified, speaking with the legislator, but also, you know, the fact that this team on the long-range planning, through Libby's leadership, applying for that CPC money, that was a big deal, because we ended up getting 20, almost $25,000. So, once again, thank you for that, and that's to highlight to the community that we are looking for monies, you know, elsewhere besides, you know, just tapping into the capital budget.
Yeah, maybe if I could just add one other thing, I don't, the, the reductions or the pushing of the items into previous, you know, future years, it's not something that we enjoy doing, right? I mean, there's, there, a lot of hard decisions, you know, have to be made, so, you know, but we, we get our share of capital, and we'll make good with that share of capital, but they were, some of them were painful.
And pushing preventative maintenance isn't a good practice.
Right.
Which we have to do.
So additionally, the long-range planning, as you all have been hearing, is discussing a few other items. So, the, and the, I think, I'm not sure if you mentioned or not, but one of them is the SOI progress, we're making a progress on that. John is working very, very hard to ensure that he's updating, you know, the, that application. I think you said you logged in today?
Oh, yeah, no, I've been in, I refreshed the application, we're having the, the content actually reviewed by AI3, so it's been sent off to them, you know, so, and now, I've looked over one section, so I've edited one section, and we have to look over all the words very carefully and get the input and make sure we have a good SOI. The due date is April 12th. My view is that I'll probably get it in by the 11th or so, that's, April 12th is a Friday. And, you know, procedurally, what that requires, Michelle, really, was you'll have to sign the minutes, where back in July, I think you did that vote. So, you'll have to sign those minutes, and the Board of Selectmen will, I'll get their vote certified, because they took their vote on February 5th. And then, at the, once I've submitted, you will get an email that has to be electronically signed, as will the Board of Directors. Boy, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen. You know, so, the Chair, Paul Healy, will get it as well, so. And that, that will come up, and it's, we've got to get done in a day, so we have a complete application, so we can get all the paperwork off in the month of time. And I'm intentionally delaying it to the end, just so that we can incorporate everything.
Right. And we have gotten some good feedback from the MSBA on the SOIs that we have submitted in the past, like, they are good, and they're not missing anything, and we are putting in all the right things, and you should wait until the end, you know, to file it, because you never know what might happen between now and that date. And so, that was good feedback that they had provided to us.
That's good. I'm glad you guys met with them, and they are in the process also of scheduling a date to visit Foster.
Yeah, they're going to come out and visit again, they're going to do another site visit.
That's great, thank you.
That is helpful.
I also want to bring the committee up too. So, you all know that we are in the process of updating the master plan that inspired, you know, 2015. So, because, you know, the Foster School became our highest priority, John is focusing on that MSBA application, so the master plan is going on. They already have a lot of information, they just have to be inputted into their, you know, updated. So hopefully, you know, by the end of this year, we should have a new master plan compiled.
In the space, yeah.
Okay, my, my goal, we have two studies that were going on. One is completed, it's for itself in high school for the exterior. We've got a similar one with mechanicals going on that we don't have back yet. So after the SOI, it's my view that I'll be getting into those studies and digesting and be able to, you know, put together the, sort of the master plan of the areas that we have to go to. So it's still my intention of, you know, deliver it by June.
So, a couple more items, and then shut up. We, you know, there was, we had a very productive meeting tonight, so, we also, John also double-checked on the money that we, we got promised by the developers at Beale Street. Obviously, we have a pledge there to donate $1 million to Plymouth River. So far, we have gotten already deposited in the account 1/3 of that. So, obviously, we wanted to make sure that we collect a million dollars, so that way we can decide what the next step is going to be, whether we are going to do an SOI or, you know, or whatever. But that is good, that we have 1/3 of the money on the account. And I believe that we'll wrap it up, the long-range planning. Thank you very much, and thank, thank you, team, for your great work.
Thank you.
For your great leadership.
All right. Policy? We don't have anything.
Policy, and nothing from Community Outreach.
Okay.
Since we...
Okay. Do you want to just mention that we changed the name of that document on the website?
Oh, dear. Do you remember what we changed it to?
Yeah.
Do you want to, please, go ahead.
So, we had received some feedback, this is for the community at large, that, the slideshow that Jamie very graciously gave to the Foster community and anybody else who came about evacuation plans for any building in the district, and making sure that there's a continuity of education. So, the name of the, I think, and I think, and the people were having trouble finding it online. And, so, we, we, it was right there on the front page of the Hingham Public Schools webpage, and yet, it was called Continuity of Education, and I don't think that that was an intuitive name. So we changed the name to Evacuation Contingency Plan, and I'm just hoping that that will make a difference when people are looking for it, that they'll, that they'll be like, oh, that's what I'm looking for. So, fingers crossed. Because it's there, and it's been there, but people are having trouble finding it, myself included.
All right, great. Thank you. Special Ed Subcommittee, I am going to schedule a meeting sometime, I'll email the two of you to check calendars, to schedule something, because I would actually like us, the three of us, to do maybe a little deep dive with Suzanne and Dr. Gallo into the Special Ed budget, and see if at this point, Dr. Viness has any changes or recommendations or suggestions on, on what we can, we can do on that. So I'll send you out a couple of dates. The CPAC has a meeting scheduled for...
The 10th.
The 10th.
We have a community forum with the people running for school committee from 5:00 till 6:00 on the 9th. This might live back today.
Okay.
It's going to be at the library in the living room?
Yep.
The big room.
The big room.
And the regular CPAC meeting will be the following night on the 10th. Also at the library in the area.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So we'll post our Special Ed Subcommittee meeting when we have it scheduled. And I'll make a note of the CPAC meeting. Salary negotiations, do you have anything for, now?
Not for now, we'll be talking about our items in executive session.
All right. All right, and any liaison reports? Snap?
Yep, Pizza Palooza on Wednesday.
Oh, right.
At Hingham High School, from 5 to 7. We have 11 pizza vendors and then a bunch of other community places. So it should be delicious, it's probably going to be packed, but come visit, and Dr. Gallo and Dr. Jamie are going to be tasting.
I know. I still...
So we appreciate your sacrifice. All right, so the official...
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
No, it is, a great one. Great, thank you. How about any updates from HEF?
Yeah, so, their annual fundraiser, Friday, March 29th, Paragon Boardwalk is going to be so much fun. And if you haven't bought your ticket, do it now, because it's really going to be a great night, and a great introduction to this brand-new facility, too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a great spot. All right, awesome.
Anybody that's anybody is going to be there.
Any, actually, one thing, I had been to a couple, a few parents and some community members are starting to have some conversations about doing some more work with Metco and doing some more, having some more parent involvement to sort of make a better collaboration between the families here and the families in Boston, sort of, a little bit on the line of the parent partnership initiative that they've done, but a little more, a little more Hingham-based, like, things we can do here to support the program and whatnot. So I just wanted to mention that. And I was thinking that, something to think about for next year, but we may even, I was thinking about possibly having a school committee liaison to the Metco Director or that group, and just to maybe get periodic updates from them. So just something to think about, maybe for next year. Schools, any, you want to give yours first?
So, Hingham High School Council is meeting on the 3rd, so I'll be there at 5:00 PM, and I'll be attending the Hingham PTO on the 4th, and, you know, going over the budget and where we are.
This is the high school PTO?
Yes.
Thank you. And, I'm sorry, at the, on the 4th, at...
The 4th is 9:30 AM.
Libby, anything from the middle school?
Hmm, I attended the PTO meeting and gave an update, and school council, principal asked us to help figure out goals for next year. We're starting to think about the school's goals.
Okay, great. South School?
I believe it's this week, I have it in my calendar, but I haven't received an email, so...
Oh, okay. So you're going to present about the budget?
I've already done that.
Oh, you already did that?
Yes, so that has taken place.
Okay.
Went really, really well. And, yeah, that was actually shortly after our last meeting.
Okay.
Last meeting.
Great. PRS?
The PRS Council was this, was, actually, we can go today as a matter of fact, on the 18th. And, good meeting.
Okay.
Talked about budget primarily.
Okay. East?
I will be attending the East...
PTO meeting in April, they're going to get back to me with the date. With the date. Okay, great. And Foster?
Foster, I went to the, right after our last meeting, I went to the school council meeting, and Beth Wilcox presented a draft of goals for next year, and after reflecting on being there for a year, showed some really great stuff going on, some stuff that the other elementary schools might want to get some ideas from. I was really impressed. And then, I also went to the PTO meeting, presented the budget. We also talked about the warrant articles with them, and I shared with them about town meeting, I gave them the citizen's guide from the League of Women Voters, and I explained to them about our thought process of why we decided to pull that warrant article, and I think they understood it. You know, they asked a lot of questions and next steps, and they did ask about the, having some more information about this evacuation contingency plan. What, I said, coming, so hopefully the presentation helped. But we had a good conversation, so, I think, and I also encouraged them to pay attention to what's going on with town meeting this year, and especially with the water company, because that's the kind of effort that has to be put into a new school. So we talked about that a little bit, and so I think people are like, okay, you know, we'll go learn more about town meetings, so that was helpful.
Yes.
I, I also want to add that on Saturday, March 30th, at 4:30 PM, is the Foster School Talent Show, and that is happening at the high school, and there's over 80 kids representing all grades that are participating in that. If you buy tickets in advance, it's $4 a person, and if you get it at the door, it's $5 per person, and the funds, any, any excess funds raised will benefit the foster music and art programs. So, everybody is really looking forward to that.
4:30?
4:30 on Saturday. And then, and then Foster's Book Fair is coming up to the beginning of April. So, they have all kinds of activities going on, but the talent show should be a big deal.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you. Dr. Ed?
May I just do a reset on the PRS?
A little showed up there, didn't you?
Finally, it's something...
I'll reopen, I'll reopen the floor to have more information.
A lot more went on than my just talking about the budget. So just a, a couple of announcements as I sat here.
Yes.
PRS will be celebrating its 50th anniversary this fall.
That's right.
And the administration at PRS is looking for any, frankly, former students who are now probably parents, or going back to the early years, and if there's any memorabilia, photographs and whatnot, just contact the administration at Plymouth River. The other observation I'd make is, we at Plymouth River have not been able to find a community representative. It didn't work out earlier, so if there's a, a non-parent out there, male or female, who would like to be a, a community representative to the Foster, excuse me, Plymouth River, just give the administration a buzz.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
If you keep going, I'll probably come up with something else.
I know. There's always so much going on at the schools, you could keep going. All right, if there is nothing else, accept a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session, for the purpose of approving the minutes of the executive session held on January 30th, 2019, discussing the food services contract and act as appropriate, discuss contracts for the Assistant Superintendent and Director of Business and Support Services, all of which the public discussion could be detrimental to the committee's bargaining positions.
Oh, second. Any discussion, or all in favor, and it's a roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. All right. Meeting adjourned.